Welcome, everyone. I call to order the Beaverton School Board meeting for March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I want to begin with the land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the Tuolting Kalapuya. We thank the ancestors of the Kalapuya for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We honor, we are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders and families who demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, and creativity. We'll start with a roll call of board members. When I call your name, just let me know if you're present. Zone one, Susan Greenberg.
Present.
Zone two, Karen Perez.
Present.
Zone three, Eric Simpson.
Present.
Zone four, Sunita Guard.
Here.
Zone five, Ugana Enenaya.
I'm here.
Zone six, Becky Timchick.
Here.
And zone seven, Tom Colette, I am here. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the agenda tonight? Okay, here in none, we will start with some community recognitions. And Eric, if you want to start us off, we have an amazing student from Sunset High School.
Yes, tonight, the district recognizes the following individuals for their outstanding achievement and contributions to the Beaverton School District and community. Erin Lee, Sunset High School senior Erin Lee was named the two thousand twenty-two Prudential Emerging Visionary for bringing powerful vision and meaningful change to his community. Erin is a co-founder of Project Lotus, an initiative to de-stigmatize mental health in Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. As one of twenty-five students selected for this year's award, Erin will receive five thousand dollars in an invitation to participate in the award summit in April. Congratulations, Erin, and I want to invite you to tell us a little more about your project.
Yeah, thank you. So I think you got most of it. That's our purpose. We're really focused on de-stigmatizing mental health in Asian-American communities. So we do that a lot through online activities like webinars, discussion groups. And I think this, you know, is such a great opportunity because I'm getting a lot of, I'm about to get a lot of coaching. So it'll help me like bring Project Lotus into like in-person around the country, which I think is super important, you know, when we're heading out of this pandemic. I think that I just want to say, you know, like this would not be possible without a lot of Sunset staff and a lot of other staff throughout the Beaverton School District. Because I know for our earliest activities, a lot of them were promoted and helped like a lot of Sunset staff really helped build those, especially like people like my counselor, Ms. Sandberg. So I'm just really thankful for the Beaverton School District because I think that a lot of the staff here have like are really cognizant about cultural identities and the importance of mental health. And I know that because when I'm working in schools in other states, that's not always the case. So I think that, you know, I'm really grateful for this school district. I'm really grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Congratulations, Erin. Next up are the Beaverton High School Girls OSAA state champions here. You guys can turn on your cameras if you are. I see Principal Irwin. I'm starting to see some students. Awesome. All right. So congratulations to our winter athletic teams. The season culminated with the boys' basketball teams from Mountainside, Southridge, and Beaverton competing in the state playoffs. Beaverton Boys went all the way to the Great Eight and won the sportsmanship trophy at the tournament. Mountainside went all the way to the Final Four. On the girls' side, Westview, Mountainside, Southridge, and Beaverton High School basketball teams all competed in the playoffs with the Beaverton Girls bringing home both the Metro League and the OSAA State Championship. Join us this evening to say a few words are our Beaverton Hedge Coach Kathy Narro, Assistant Coach John Narro, and team captains Emily Rice, Madison Narro, Laney Spear, Zoe Border, and Hannah Rice. I will turn the mic over to you guys, our champions.
Chairman Colette, could I start with just a couple things before Kathy goes?
Absolutely. Anytime, Ann.
Sure. I know that Coach Narro will talk about the amazing group of young women who are student athletes. They're leaders in our classrooms, in our hallways, and definitely on the court. But before she goes, I want to make sure that people know how proud we are of Kathy. This is her first take title as a, as a coach. I had the pleasure of introducing her at senior night in person and in our, in our senior night in the stadium or at Beaverton High School. And I know Kathy, Coach Narro, to be a coach of great distinction. I think I said at that time that she is unarguably the best women's high school basketball coach in the state of Oregon, and I'd amend those remarks tonight and tell you she is one of the finest coaches, period, in the state of Oregon. She coaches with honor and is always pursuing joy in everything that she does. And it's two of the things that Kathy and I talk about a lot, about the honor of service to others and the joy that every day brings you. And when you look for those two things, you end up having finding success. And so we were thrilled to be there on Saturday with our fans, with our band. We had the best student crowd around, and it was a wonderful community win for us. So I just hats off to Kathy and the entire coaching squad and also our amazing women's basketball team. Kathy.
Thank you, Ann. I appreciate it. Yeah, I we are just so grateful to the Beaverton School District, to Beaverton High School, to Ann, who Beaverton High School has been so lucky to have, to Mike Block, and I could go on and on, but it was just such a special group of girls that just put the team first. And we talked about just enjoying the journey and enjoying every day. You look at the last two years with COVID, you know, you never know what's around the corner and what might be coming. And that's why you have to appreciate each day and be in the present and give it your best. And these girls did that, and I'm just so proud of them. And I just want to thank everybody for their support, the, the atmosphere Saturday night with the Beaverton High School and everyone there was just amazing. All of the girls, Hannah Rice, Emily Rice, our seniors, incredible leader, leaders, Laney, Maddie, Zoe, just awesome, just fantastic job. So girls, I don't know if you want to say anything, but I'm so proud of you. So I don't know if the girls are supposed to speak or I'm just supposed to speak how this works.
You all can speak as much as you want.
Emily, you want to say anything as seniors or leaders?
Yeah, I can say something. I just wanted to say how grateful I am to be part of that program and this program for the past four years and how much I've grown as a person on and off the court and just thank the Beaverton community for everything they give, have given me.
Yeah, I would also say like similar to that. It was just like all four years has been such an amazing experience throughout the, in Beaverton and in the Beaverton basketball community. And I just want to thank the coaches and everyone who made that possible and such an amazing experience.
Tom. Laney, did you, did you want to say something, Laney?
Well, obviously, I'm not a senior, so I'm not done yet, but this year was just so great. And like the past three years I've been here, the experience has just been incredible and I'm really happy that we can end this year this way and hopefully we can do it again next year. So and also Emily and Hannah, we could not have asked for like better senior leadership. We could not have asked for better coaches, Kathy and John. So we're just super thankful for the program and everyone that's super supportive of it. So.
Tom, if I could just say something, so a lot of people don't know, this could very well have been a three-peat state championship and you know, because of COVID, this team would have been the favorite, I believe, in the last two years and that just, I think it goes to show what this team has fought through because when you have to fight through something that's this devastating to have it right there at your fingertips the last two years and not get it, but yet have that pressure that I imagine these seniors had on them to try to win it and do it for all of those players that had it right at their fingertips, but just did not get the chance. I think it really says something about the grit and resilience of this team and coach and your assistant coaches, hats off to you because it's, it's hard to do. Not everybody gets the opportunity to step on that floor at the Child Center. So hats off to you. And also, Ann, to you, what, what icing on the cake? I think I text to you. And I, I knew how much your heart was crying for those girls the last two years that didn't get that chance. So icing on the cake.
Can I just add two, two quick things? I think you guys would like to hear. One is Kathy is the second woman coach in Oregon State history to win a state title as a coach in the six A level. The first one was done at Central Catholic at two thousand three. Sandy did it, which was amazing. And number two, the girls set a six A playoff record of holding one team to eighteen points in a game. And for the season, we held our opponents to twenty-eight point one points a game as a season. So pretty, pretty amazing, pretty amazing group.
We are looking forward to celebrating this team the rest of this week and then when we come out of spring break, we've got some, some things planned. So it's, it's great to start it off with a a celebration with you all tonight. So I think it's been great to have this.
I don't. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we will hear from our labor partners. We've got Sarah, are you here? We got Sarah Schmidt, the president of Beaverton Education Association. Great. And then we'll be followed by Kirsty from OSEA.
Thank you so much, Chair Colette. That is a tough act to follow. As I pull up my comments here, I'll just say I, as a former student athlete myself, the tenacity and community building and just dedication to a cause that you learned from athletics is hard to match in other places. Okay, here we go. Good evening, Chair Colette, Superintendent Grodding, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and happy almost spring break. We are also reaching a landmark here, sort of upon the, the two-year mark of when COVID start, started to impact our communities here in Oregon and that kind of unknown that we stepped into around spring break a couple of years ago. At this point in the pandemic, it's a good time to reflect on the ways that we've had to adapt and pivot and navigate unprecedented times. How many times did we say that phrase? And here we are this week with some changes in our protocols based on a reduction in case rates and and community spread of COVID. So it feels like we're coming out on the other end of things while being very cautious. Throughout this time, there has been incredible loss and trauma and struggle. We also have some successes, I think, that have come out of this. We've learned how important it is to put each other first as humans and focus on relationships before we worry about academic rigor. We found ways to, new ways to use technology for learning. We've established new systems of support for mental and behavioral health. And I hope that we are all listening very carefully to the students on BSAC, who I know are working to make sure that students are accessing the supports that they need. We have focused on practices that reduce and eliminate racism and bias in our work so that every student can thrive in our schools. And as we move forward, we have a chance now to create a budget that is a moral document that aligns with what we have learned about what students and educators need and is aligned with the district's stated values. We are working at the table to make some agreements with the district at the bargaining table and wanting to implement the things that we know our students and educators need and get some agreements. I know that the district at the beginning of the process shared your guiding principles, which are improving learning conditions, being financially responsible, and maintaining quality labor relations. BEA's priorities or interests, I should say, have been focused on the implementation of a full continuum, continuum, excuse me, of restorative practices, systems that will help recruit and retain BIPOC educators, responsive student services that meet the needs of students with disabilities and support mental behavioral health, protected member-directed planning time, student-centered instruction, competitive compensation, and manageable class sizes and workloads that students receive the individual attention that they need from educators. Luckily, we have resources and we have an opportunity to invest in these supports and the things that we know students and educators need. As Mike Schofield's budget update shows, and you'll hear more about tonight, I'm sure, that the district has a projected ending fund balance of ninety-seven point two million dollars or about sixteen and a half percent of the budget. It's important to note that OSBA recommends that districts maintain reserves in the five to eight percent range. This funding has been allocated to our district to invest in our students' learning conditions and not to be held as reserves. As you've heard from educators all year, the need for support is now. Our classified staff, who have been the backbone of this district throughout the last couple of years, need the support now. So it's time to do right by our community and our students and use resources responsibly. And agreements at the bargaining table are a great way to show your staff, to show BSD students and their families and our community that this district takes this responsibility seriously and values the staff that work here. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate the comments. Next up, we have Kirsty Sackman from the Oregon School Employees Association.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Colette, Superintendent Grodding, and members of the board. I am Kirsty Sackman. I am the OSEA Classified President as well as a paratuseped educator at McKinley Elementary. Just because we had these amazing members of our BHS basketball team as a former BHS staff, congratulations to our women's basketball team. We are so proud of you. Your hard work really matters. You guys showed up and you did great things. I remember being at the Child Center two years ago when we thought we were going to take, take the last one and you guys continued working and working hard and continued the legacy and we are all very proud of you. Just want to say a yay for you guys. Thank you. I also would like to say on behalf of me as well as our E-Board and all of our classified staff, we thank BEA and Sarah Schmidt for their continued comments and support, always supporting us as classified staff. We've worked very hard this year to grow our relationship with BEA and stand in solidarity one hundred percent. And we thank you guys very much for all of your support throughout the year as was as we go into our bargaining contract negotiations. Last week, we celebrated Classified Appreciation Week. I would like to say a big thank you, a giant thank you to each and every classified staff member as well as our subs for all your continued effort, hard work, dedication to our community. We know that each and every day our community could not run without our valuable efforts and support. I could never say enough thank yous. Our board could never say enough. We could never do enough to really accentuate the thank you that we have for all of the hard work. I also would like to thank everyone who slowed down in all of this chaos and took the time to recognize and take the little moments to appreciate our classified staff because we all know we are all human and we've all been in different ships in the same storm for the last few years and, and our entire time as educators. And so those little moments of appreciation really make a big difference. A lot of our classified staff work hard every day, but don't feel the value of their work even though that I don't know how they don't because they matter and we know they matter. But those little moments of every single person that took the time to slow down and say thank you, show their appreciation, it really matters. And I appreciate everyone that took the time. I would like to say a big thank you to everyone on my OSEA board who worked tirelessly to not only plan for Classified Appreciation Week, but worked very hard to make sure that we were on, at every site last week. And we gave out a small gift as appreciation for every single classified staff, member or not, we worked really hard to get out a small gift of our appreciation because we know that those little moments really matter. And so I really want to thank my board for all their hard work this last week as well as their hard work every day of this whole year. As an OSEA board, we are working hard to continue everyday supports of our classified staff. And we are currently preparing for election, elections for our next year's E-Board. All of our positions except for our vice president are open for nominations. So just putting that out there, if you are classified staff and have a little extra time to give each month, we would love to have you on our board. We want more voices at the table because we know that we are stronger together than we are separate. We are also looking for conference delegates to represent our chapter at our OSEA June Conference. As a board, we have continued this year to try to increase our communications around all things union, but we are this spring working very hard to bring updates on our bargaining because since our last school board meeting, we have had our first bargaining meeting with the district and we are looking forward to our second bargaining session coming this Friday, March eighteenth. We as a board as well as a union would like to thank everyone at our bargaining table, both on our side as well as the district's side for the time, the patience, the understanding, and the listening ears and the voice at the table because all of our voices matter. And if we don't work together as a collective, we can't grow together as a collective. With that, we ask all classified staff as well as any certified and admin staff that would like to support us this Friday as well as every bargaining session moving forward, please wear blue in honor of our bargaining. We stand together in solidarity. OSEA is a navy blue, but any shade of blue will do for us. All of it matters, showing up, showing support. We understand that not everyone can come to the table or come to the listening sessions, but showing up in blue to your work site shows that we are solid together. We as OCA are communicating often with BEA to increase that communication and the wraparound of our equitable working conditions because we all, I can never say enough, stand stronger together. We value the growth in our relationship with BEA as well as our district staff. And we thank everyone here in this meeting and everyone listening for their time and their support. Please again, wear blue this Friday in solidarity of our union bargaining as well as our upcoming bargaining. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kirsty. Okay, next up, we would normally have our student representatives or BSAC. But tonight, they, they didn't have an update for us, so they let us know that, that they're going to take a pass on tonight, but we will see them at the next board meeting. And with that, we'll move into the public comments part. I want to note that we received six written comments. Board members, appreciate your comments and thank each and every one of you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. We also are going to be taking comments at our board meeting tonight and we thank folks for attending the board meeting with us today. We're truly grateful for your presence and opportunity to receive your input. One of our district's greatest strengths is community involvement. As we know, your involvement comes from a place of caring for our students, families, community, and staff. Please know that board members do not respond directly to testimony, but we are paying close attention to your comments. We know it can be difficult to testify in public, but we are sincerely interested in hearing your comments and concerns. We ask that all present model respectful behavior to provide an open space in which a variety of viewpoints and perspectives can be shared. With that in mind, a few guidelines. Our comments do not allow for the specific naming of school personnel. Personnel matters should be dealt with either through the complaint process or by contacting a principal or central office staff. If a school personnel is named during a comment period, I will stop your comments and ask you to refrain from naming the person. If it occurs a second time, you will be asked to end your comments. Comments must be relevant to our current board agenda. If you're speaking on a different subject, you will receive a warning. If a commentator continues to deviate from the board's topic, they will be muted and their testimony ended. If you have not spoken directly to a subject on the board agenda tonight, within thirty seconds of beginning your testimony, I will stop and ask that you speak to an issue on the agenda or end your testimony. Everyone has two minutes to provide testimony to the board. A timer will be set and will go off at the two-minute mark. If you continue talking beyond the two minutes, I will ask you to end your comments. To ensure fair treatment for all commentators, or all commenters, I should say, this will be enforced uniformly regardless of the subject matter, point of view, or whether you have finished your prepared comments. I understand it can be difficult to provide comments within this shortened time period and recommend that any comments you did not have time to provide orally be sent to the board in an email or paper form. Please do not speak or interrupt the meeting outside of the two-minute period provided for your testimony. If this occurs, you will be asked to leave or removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us tonight and we look forward to hearing your comments. And I, our first commentator is Kimberly Chriswell Hernandez. Kimberly, if you want to turn on your screen and let me know when you're ready, I'm getting a timer set up for you. Okay. And when, whenever you're ready, Kimberly, we can, we can start.
All right. Thank you and good evening and congratulations to our athletes. Wow, so exciting. Um, thank you for making the right decision to make masks optional for our children's and teachers. My son was elated after school today. The first thing he said in the car was, I got to see my teacher's face today. Obviously brought me to tears. Unfortunately, shame on you for requiring masks for volunteers that have a religious or medical exemption for this COVID jab. Exemption or not, this is discriminatory and should be protected by the Civil Liberties Act and is illegal. Enough is enough, and especially for the women out there. Remember, my body, my choice. This should not be forgotten in any circumstance. The second we got the email, they needed volunteers and I wouldn't have, and I would not have had to have worn a mask. I logged on and immediately signed up for a minimum of once a week to help our teachers that need it so badly. I will not be volunteering until the mask requirement is lifted. When my son started kindergarten, I jumped in headfirst into our school and even joined the board. I had eighty hours of volunteering before two weeks to flatten the curve, two years ago. Quickly found that there are only a handful of parents that had that much passion for volunteering and I miss it. So answer me this, why is it that I can coach my boys' basketball team maskless but can't help the exact same kids in their classroom the next day? Also, I hear vaccinated people catch and spread COVID as well. Not making much sense about the mask. Since you all know the answers to these questions, I need to know why we are getting pushed out as healthy, excited parents to volunteer and smile at our children in these classrooms. How is that community involvement that you mentioned? Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next up, we will have Tracy Schlanzer. Tracy, are you here? I see it.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. And let me just reset my timer for you. Here we go. And whenever you're ready, you can start.
Hi, I'm advocating for the district to remove the mask policy for unvaccinated volunteers. Under the BSD COVID Protocol Information Volunteer Section, it references OAR three-three-three dash zero nineteen dash ten thirty and states that the district is requiring unvaccinated volunteers to be masked. In reading this OAR section, there is no mention of masks. This is a district policy. And I ask the district to remove this policy for the following four reasons. One, this appears to be a privacy violation of sorts. By forcing a mask on a volunteer, it becomes identifiable health information. This is a violation of privacy rules that establish national standards to protect individually identifiable health information. Two, if you put masks on volunteers who are unvaccinated, it teaches kids that it's okay to treat others differently for medical reasons. This is medical discrimination. Three, in the before-mentioned OAR section, it says COVID-nineteen variants run through the state's unvaccinated population and cause an increase in breakthrough cases for those who are fully vaccinated. This statement appears as a driving cause for the district's policy as masking unvaccinated volunteers continues. This statement is flawed because there is no evidence to support the claim. It is a statement of opinion based on a one-sided narrative. This statement is flawed because there is no evidence to support the claim. It is a statement of opinion based on a one sided narrative. O H A data. From this year, January of this year, shows how double vaccinated are being infected, AKA breakthrough infections in this state. At a weekly average of fifty percent. Yet, the unvaccinated are the ones being blamed and discriminated against by forcing them to put on a mask. I ask that the district does its due diligence. In referencing the statements in which decisions are made.
Tracy, your two minutes are up. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming tonight and commenting. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So. One second, let me get this alarm off here. And we will move on to um, our reports and start with superintendent Grodin's uh, comments to the board.
Thank you, Chair Colette. Welcome, board members, students, staff and uh, parents and community. Uh, happy to be here today and as you know, today was uh, our mass optional policy implementation is at, as it started today and um. Heard mostly uh, very positive comments and uh, we do continue to follow uh, Oregon Health Authority and our Oregon Department of Education regarding. Protocols for uh, COVID nineteen. And once again, I just want to thank uh, you know, all of our students, our families, staff. Uh, for their effort to get to this place that we are today. Uh, the mitigation. Strategies that we used have allowed us to help continue our students to be in uh, continuous education. So. A great shout out and thank you. I also want to do a shout out and thank you to uh, Shelley Bailey Shaw and our communications department for. Putting out the either way, it's okay video and letting folks know uh, it's okay if you want to wear a mask or if you don't want to wear a mask. Uh, just to let you know, um, I'm at some different activities today, whether it's the central office. And definitely I was at uh, the state tournament watching our, watching our girls win the state championship. And what I would like to say is uh. When I looked up into both student bodies, both Barlow's student body and our student body, I'd probably say. About fifty to sixty percent of our kids were still wearing masks. And so, and some of them weren't, and I think uh. Uh, I think people need to use their own judgment. Uh, everybody has a different lived experience, whether you're a student, staff member. Um, or other folks coming in. So uh, was just uh, real happy uh, with what's going on. Our cases continue to fall and I hope we get in a, in a uh, much better situation even than we are today. Also, I just wanted to take uh, this, this time and and comment on uh, the process. That this board is used for the superintendent search. I just want to applaud you. As we know, it's the most important decision that board could do, can do in selecting a next superintendent. And I know we're getting ready to finalize that process and excited for that uh, to take over, but just want to. Uh, you know, you've all got a lot on your plate, but you, you know, you went out, you did a national search, you found a consultant. You had some of the very best candidates from across the nation apply and uh, we will be looking forward to Wednesday. Uh, at eleven o'clock that that announcement. So thank you for uh, doing, doing your work there. Talk a little bit about the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget and you'll hear a little bit again today from um. Assistant Superintendent Mike Schofield, uh, our superintendent in charge of business services. And uh. We have been in contact also with the Department of Education specifically around the enrollment drops that. Various districts are seeing and we, as you know, Beaverton, we're down about two thousand students, but. Overall, our state is amount down about thirty-two thousand students. And then when you add the weights onto those students, so you add a weight on if a student is classified as a special education student or student of poverty. Uh, could be an English language learner student, those. Those numbers go up to thirty-eight thousand weighted students. And so when you really look at that, there's some potential for folks in declining enrollment to lose some significant dollars. And also we keep talking about the S R dollars that are helping us so much in the classroom right now with social, emotional. Um, some safety uh, protocols and staffing and to remember that um. Those funds go away. Those are one time funds and we're using them. When those funds go away, we'll no longer have uh, those resources. So. I just want to applaud uh. Mike and his group in the business office, but also the board and other staff in really taking a time to look at this as a long term. Issue. Yes, we have a high ending fund balance, but the reason we have that high ending fund balance right now. Is because we've had an infusion of dollars. At the federal level as well as during COVID, uh, we have not been using some of those funds, but what I will tell you is. When those dollars go away, we don't want to be in a position to where. Where you are kind of running the car off the cliff to, so to speak. Uh, we want to make sure that we're able to. Provide sustainable, adequate resources to our students and our staff. And as you heard, we are in bargaining and the district does stand ready to work with our associations to negotiate. A contract that does provide sustainable resources to support. Uh, our students and staff for the long term. And my final one, and you've heard enough about it was just uh, uh, I was at the state championship able to watch uh. Uh, our, our girls win that state championship and it was a great uh. Uh, to see the entire community get there, but it was just uh, it's great to see uh, all the long, hard work that takes place. Um, through these athletes and these coaches um, come to do great things. And also I don't want to uh, not take the opportunity. To recognize our um. Our Beaverton boys won the sportsmanship trophy for the tournament and that says a lot. About the conduct, the character of these students and their coaches and things that are being instilled within these students. It's not always just about wins and losses. There's a lot more taking place, whether it's on the playing field or in a band room or in a choir room or during a play. There's lots of things happening uh, that we don't often get to see. And that's all I have, Chair Colette.
Thanks Superintendent Grody. Um, next up, we have our school reports. Uh, we have uh, Cooper Mountain Elementary in Aloha Huber Park. Uh, Principal Montalongo, do you want to kick us up off with uh, Cooper Mountain?
Yes, I would love to. Uh, good evening, Chair Colette, school board members, superintendent Grodin. Students, staff, parents and community. And I need to give a special uh, shout out to my Cooper Mountain peeps who are sending me a text of support as I. Uh, presented to the school board for my first time as a principal. My name is Ally Montalongo. I am the principal at Cooper Mountain. And I am grateful for the opportunity to share about our school tonight. We are a school with strong parental support and involvement. And we've experienced some pretty big fluctuations in our enrollment since the pandemic began. That being said, tonight I would like to highlight and celebrate the work. That Cooper Mountain staff, students and families have done around anti bias, anti racism work. I would be remiss not to thank Superintendent Grody. And you, our school board, for your commitment to this imperative work. That in turn has allowed me the opportunity to lead and support this work in my building and in our community. I'm now going to share a little bit about um, some of the pieces of A bar work we've been doing since May of two thousand twenty. We have targeted professional development based on learnings from district P Ds. In addition, I am fortunate to be a part of the administrative cohort with the center, center for equity and inclusion. I also recently applied for and received two equity coaches from Northwest Regional E S D. They will be working with myself and a team of staff here at Cooper Mountain to examine our current structures, policies and protocols. In an effort to make them more equitable. All of the committees that we have this year at Cooper Mountain are based on an equity lens. Of course, we have an A bar committee, but we also have an A bar P L C, which is open to the entire staff. We meet once a month after school and discuss um, some pretty significant topics. And it's been great to see how many people have joined that. In addition, we have an optional book club where we read books that help our learnings around anti bias, anti racism. Two years ago, we started an Asian American Pacific Islander parent affinity group at Cooper Mountain. We did this in order to solicit the voices of our largest marginalized group. Learning in this team is about education and equity as parents in the school system. Learning about equity so that they can advocate and be strategic stakeholders in our community. In addition, we have a fourth and fifth grade student BIPOC group. At our school, they meet once a month. We've recently partnered also with Heighton Elementary School. And so the students from both schools who they self-select to be in that group. Um, they meet over Zoom with staff members um. And talk about kind of whatever's on their mind, but one of the recent quotes I have here um, from a student is. I am a person of color. I know I'm different. I know it can be difficult, but I think it's still awesome. So it's just providing a really nice space for our BIPOC students to come together. Students are seeing themselves represented in our literature. Both in the classrooms and in the libraries as well as on the walls throughout our building. Finally, I was a couple of minutes late to the school board meeting tonight because I had the opportunity to share a quick. Quick comment with the Beaverton Diversity Advisory Board. Uh, I spoke to them about our A A P I parent affinity group. And the legislation that recently passed in New Jersey about A A P I education and the importance of um. Sharing all histories in school. We also talked about Oregon's House Bill twenty-eight forty-five and the ethnic studies. We asked them how they could help support us in elevating students' voices and identities. Finally, our literacy focus throughout the pandemic has been on reading. Specifically, our biggest group of striving readers is in the first grade, which is probably not surprising. Um, the academic coach in our intervention team is focusing on phonological awareness with this group of students to help them make the most gains. Lastly, today is the ver- very first March fourteenth. That I have been able to be in my building with students and with staff since I've been hired as a principal. It's exciting to think about what lies ahead this spring as I have not experienced most of it thus far. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Principal Montalongo. Uh, questions from the board? Karen?
Hey, thank you for um, for your presentation and I think that's some, that's great that you're connecting to the A A P I community since that's. The largest um, group that you have in your school. So that's, that's a great resource. Um, one of my questions was um, in your plan, you talked about. That there's an opportunity for improvement um, in both E L A and math. Um, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about. Um, I, I see that you have like some professional development that's coming up. Um, I like that you have the common plan time and clever collaborative planning times. Um, and you're structuring some of the communication so that teachers um, can get together and do some of that planning. And I was wondering what's, what's the disconnect? You know, I think for it to be um. There isn't a lot of poverty according to the numbers, but why are the numbers so low um, in the academic side in your opinion?
So that's a great question and um. Again, I've only been here since two thousand nineteen, so the, the test scores that I have seen and that have been um. That have shown for Cooper Mountain are something that took place prior to me arriving here at the school. That is one of the questions that I had and that um, I spoke to actually in my interview uh, when we were talking about. Test scores. Um, and I think one of the. Areas was that there hadn't been a previous um, expectation of a common curriculum. Or a common curricular experience for all students. And so now I believe that that is more aligned. Um, as far as vertically as well as horizontally, the teachers plan very well together. But they also know that if they had units of study in kindergarten, they're going to have units of study throughout their experience.
Thank you. Um, and I think. What are the, for um, for one of them, you talked about having kid chats as one of, on kid chats A and B. Were held weekly. Are the kid chats like when the teachers get together, talk about kids or the kids getting together and have chat, you know, about their work and things like that?
Yes, good question. It's the teachers getting together. And so typically what we do, so. Kid chat A is for academic concerns and B is for behavior concerns. And what we do, for example, we had one today and. A fourth grade teacher had a concern, so that teacher brings forth the concern and then the other fourth grade team members are there. As well as the counselor, possibly the academic coach, myself and the student success coach, and then we all sort of offer. Additional interventions that maybe haven't been tried yet. Um, prior to seeing if that is a student that needs to be referred to the special education team. Or if it's something that we can remedy with interventions handled within the classroom.
Thank you. I guess the last thing I was thinking about the quote from the student and saying, I know I'm different. And um, it made me think about as we continue this work. Um, and I don't, and I don't know like how they feel different, what they experience um, of being different. If they're talking about what they're experiencing in their school or different from what. Um, and so as a person in brown skin, um, in predominantly white spaces. I don't necessarily, and everybody has a different experience. I don't necessarily see myself as different. Um, I just see that there are um, things that I have to offer in life experiences um, that. I've had to bring to the table. So as we continue this work, I, I wonder about. Um, like following some of that A bar work that you've started and seeing how students feel, if they feel different or if they see some of their um. Superpowers that I would name in their different identities and um, whether it's race, ethnicity, gender expression. But thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. And if I could just speak to that for a moment, um, we have really sort of turned the narrative to celebrate differences as assets. And so my experience with that quote from that student was um. Was as a celebration, not as a, an othering, if you will. Um, and just knowing the student and uh, knowing how they present and how they um, show up in space. I believe that was a positive comment. I do appreciate what you said because I see how it could be interpreted either way.
Thank you.
Obana and then Becky.
Hi, Ally. Thank you so much for your presentation. I want to start by saying thank you. Um, for the anti racist and anti bias work that you are doing in your school. Um, thank you for creating a safe space for um, students of color to be able to express themselves freely. So um, I appreciate that. Please keep up the good work. I'm always interested in looking at participation rates and um, your numbers look really great on the side of um, how much. Uh, parents are engaging and um, how much they feel valued. So I see the number. Uh, there's a bit of a difference there, but still looks good. I love that um, your teachers. Are feeling um, value of their country to contribute and make decisions. So I like that. I like those numbers. I'm also very much interested in looking at um, the absence and exclusion measures. And I see that the number reduced. It was quite high in eighteen nineteen at nineteen point zero and then seven point five. I just want to. Uh, just put it out there that I would love to see it just keep getting better as uh, as we get back. As, as we get back to normal, I understand it is zero point zero for twenty twenty one based on COVID and all that. But once we get into a normal routine, I just put it out there to, so hopefully make sure that the number keeps getting better and better. So no question there. Just comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Becky?
Great to see you, Ally. And I am looking forward to some, a couple of visits coming up. Coming to Cooper Mountain in person, that will be great. My question to you, has there been any, and it could be just anecdotal. I know you don't have any. But do you know why your population is, have you've got more students that have attended flex this past couple of years? Or do you think they've moved out of the area because of affordability or, you know, homes? Do you have any idea? Or are you expecting students to return next, next September?
I do have an idea. So when we first went to CDL, so that again was the spring of my first year here. We had about seventy five families out of, I'm going to say around four thirty at that time. About seventy five families who left to go to other options. Several went to flex. We had some go to homeschool. We had some people just move out of the area altogether. That number is slowly coming back. I think I said in my most recent from a couple of days ago that word, I want to say four sixty two, but that sounds kind of high right now. So, oh, four thirty two. So we're definitely, I think, people are coming back. Flex students at the semester. I only had four come back, which I thought there might be a little bit more than that. But we, I think we're headed in the right direction as far as that goes.
And do you have any, you know, most people think smaller is always better. Are there special challenges when your population has changed like that? Or have there been special obstacles?
I think staffing is a little bit difficult when it, when your numbers fluctuate like that. You can get down to some really low class sizes, class sizes, which nobody would ever complain about. But also I have some really big class sizes, the share in my kindergarten in particular, that has been difficult. So I would say just the fluctuation of a number of students and trying to balance that with staffing needs has been probably the most difficult.
Right. Appreciate your enthusiasm and I look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. You too.
Other questions for Principal Montalongo? Right. Well, thank you for coming tonight and spending time with us. We appreciate the update and look forward to seeing you in a couple of years when we can talk about, hopefully we can talk about what's going on in a post COVID world.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you all.
Next up, we have Principal Giardello from Aloha Huber Park.
Well, thank you very much. And may I share my screen?
Please, absolutely.
It seems that they have to grant me access. If possible.
David, can you grant access?
Give it a try now.
Oh, yes. Now, thank you. So, okay, well, good evening, Chair Colette and School Board, Superintendent Grodin and the Beaverton School District Administrators. My name is Alfonso Giardello and it's my pleasure to talk about Aloha Huber Park and the work and the effort that we are making. And I would just, I know that this, for some of you familiar with Aloha Huber Park. Aloha Huber Park, we are around nine hundred students currently with a large population of English learners. Even though the numbers say that we have ninety plus, ninety five percent of free and reduced, I think that with the COVID, those numbers not be necessarily accurate, but I will say that certainly we are larger than eighty five. We have twenty six languages and fifty countries represented, which is part of our richness. And what makes Aloha Huber Park special are the programs that we have within the school, the dual language program and the newcomers. And we serve both the elementary school and the middle school newcomers from the district. Aloha Huber Park has a long history of serving kids that have challenges. And we have been developed a lot of skills and we have been known because we have been able to accelerate. And our numbers speaks for themselves. And these are numbers and these are graphics before COVID. If you follow the green lines, that's Aloha Huber Park growth. And you have the average in the district and in the state. And what we are really proud, make us proud is the growth of the ELLs and the specialized kids that we, we track and follow. But we're living new times. And when I started as a principal, I knew that the challenges were ahead of us with all the circumstances, COVID and when it's a crisis, the people that suffer the most are the people that need the most. So what, what we're going from now, and I'm sharing with you what is our mission, what we call our mission. Through our daily efforts, we will provide all our students, especially those who have been historically marginalized, with the necessary skills and opportunities to make their own choices about their education now and after they leave their K twelve educational system. This mission, when I started as a principal, I really, I have been in Aloha Huber Park for a long time. I have lived the story, but what I have clear is that these are new times and new territories. And we have been an experts on making growth of the kids. But what I really made my mission is to make the kids the protagonist of that growth because sometimes when kids have needs, we have that over effort to do things for them. And that is not giving the best of themselves. And that's why I made even the bold attempt to change the logo. And I invite the staff to adopt that compass because we want to offer that vision that we want the kids just to have a compass in their life to choose their own future. The three main tools that we use for this, I will say, one is what we call kingdom of the flame. So the sparkle is all what is needed because the power is in the kids. So we are adopting a lot of things for kids who have their own voice. And they find places to be themselves and to express themselves. And that's a big intention that we have in order to put this equity move into practice, into the daily practice. The second, it will be the high quality staff that we have. So I have been proud to be involved in the hiring of seventy five percent of the staff. And I can tell that we, our big, big effort is in diversity. Talking about race, we're the school with forty four percent. I'm not sure where the district is, but I'm sure that we are one of the top. And race is one of them, but gender is another one. The reason that for us have males in the elementary is because in the schools of poverty, the male figure is not always present with all the families. We are not looking necessarily for the fifty fifty, but have a serious presence of males and have a lot of experience. If you see, the experience of our teachers is high. We have a unique way of hiring. It's a really long process of hiring. We never compromise because we have the best of the best. And that has been our secret sauce of Aloha Huber Park. My success, if any, is not mine, is of my staff and the quality of staff that we have in the building. And the third thing is the collaborative effort that we have in the building, the collective efficacy. And we have made in these two years, big changes that were necessary. So one is to find that middle point unity between where the district is going and when Aloha Huber Park needs to be based on the needs. And we are working really hard together with the district. I think that never, like never before. We enhance our dual language model. We align with the district in our fifth, in our ninety ten model. And we, with approval of cabinet, created, the middle school is going into a full dual language model to assure the pathway from kindergarten all the way to, to high, to high school. If you're talking about some of the results, I will say just to give you some, some data. The currently, we have only twelve students that have been suspended in school suspension. Only one school so far that has been outside suspension out of nine hundred. And all the way since the beginning of the school year. Our middle school, we motivated to read and typically in a year, they read one thousand books. Half of the year, one in fifteen hundred, we're sure that will achieve three thousand. And the secret is the choice piece. We put a lot of books and a lot of choice there. We are creating, we created a position for family and community involvement just to focus in families that are not represented. It's a certified position. And she's, this person is working right now in a project that is a family partnership action team with parents, teachers and committee will be involved in give voice and guidance to the school. We have a real clear vision where we're going in the near future. So we know what is needed, even though we're responding to the needs as well. And for this matter, all the teachers have had voice. If you ask me about challenges, I will just mention two things as a challenge. One, as I mentioned, is the COVID impact. Attendance has been a problem, the kids that are behind. If we have, you know, same grade kids that were at different levels, that has, that gap has been really humongous with the new times, but we're ready to face it. The second challenge, I will say, is that the community in Aloha Huber Park is, is changing. And we are really affected for is the real gentrification. The cheapest apartment, I think, in the area, and these are not the best one, is around fifteen hundred dollars right now. And families are suffering and I'm concerned that the families that needed the most will have to move out of the area. This is a quick summary. Thank you very much. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Susan?
First of all, I loved your presentation. I've never seen anything like that where you just click on something and expand. So I'm really impressed with how you focus on, how you had it focused, fired on. And I just love putting, really, I can feel that you put your kids first and their voices first. And I just wanted to compliment you on that. And I know you have really tough challenges and it sounds like you're facing them head on. And I really commend you for that as well. My question is, and this is just ignorance on my part. I did not realize that the dual language went through high school at Aloha Huber. And I'm just wondering which high school
We are going, so that's, that's, the, the truth is that this pathway was not established at least, at least for the Aloha Huber Park kids. So they had the elementary with us. Even in previous years, if they leave the, the attendance area, they will have to leave the program. That's not anymore a fact. So now we, with the support of cabinet and the superintendent now is a real option program. So the kids start the program with us, they have the right to continue. And they will continue through the middle school in Aloha Huber Park and then they will go to Aloha High.
Okay, so Aloha High now has a dual language.
Correct.
Oh, okay. That's really good. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Sunita, then Ugana and Karin?
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. It was really good. And I did check your diversity numbers. They are much better than other schools. And it shows, you know, that, and also your discipline actions that you are taking, that you're doing in school suspension instead of out of school. That's really, really good. And I was impressed with your presentation. Thank you for what you're doing and keep on doing it. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Sunita. It's an honor.
Ugana and then Karin?
Hi, Alfonso. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I really enjoyed it. And I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to diverse hiring. I am a firm believer that our students benefit when they see themselves in their educators and, and the, and members of staff. So thank you for that. I also like the numbers that I'm seeing in participation rates. I see some of the numbers drop down. I'm just curious as to what, what happened. I see numbers of class days missed due to suspensions went from one hundred and forty to twenty three point five. That's a huge change. And I, I love that number. I'm just curious as to what you did to arrive at that. And also you mentioned for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, you have twelve days in school suspension, just like Sunita. That's a great move. I truly appreciate that. So out of curiosity, what steps did you take to reduce that number to twenty three point five?
The, the reality is that we are a school like any other school and the secret is the teachers. I mean, those are the heroes because when you have good teachers that do the work and are really for the kids, first of all, you don't have to be chasing kids. I don't chase kids in the building. So the other thing is that I have kids with high, high needs, but we put an effort to know those kids. So the kid that needed the most is the kid that will not benefit being outside of school. So we have a lot of interventions and we're getting really good handling situations and preventing. So I would say it's a lot to be working upfront. So as simple as, you know what, if a teacher is absent, we know upfront which kids we have to, to target and be successful. Because if a kid with a substitute is not responding and acts out, it's not the kid's fault, it's the system's fault. So those kind of simple things to be ahead and to make the kids successful when circumstances change. That's what I really think that we, we have created really good systems in that matter. Obviously, we are not perfect. But we are trying to find ways to, to bring solutions every time and to be ahead of the game.
Thank you so much, Alfonso. Please keep up the good work.
Karin?
Hola, Alfonso. Buenas noches. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros hoy. I just, it's more of a, I wanted to point out something that's amazing about dual language programs. So if we look at Alfonso and his team's data for third grade, you see numbers in the twenties and forties for math and twenties in the thirties and reading at third grade. And then when you see them again in eighth grade, and that's the curve we expect to see for dual language programs, you're seeing that the students have met or exceeded the reading and math. Because it takes five to seven years within a dual language program for the students to meet or exceed. If, if the program is consistent, if it has good curriculum, like all the, the special sauce that he talked about, amazing staff, the consistency. So well structured dual language program, K eight, will show this curve. And I just wanted to point it out to our board to, to show that when this is done right, then this is a curve that you will expect to see. And you might see, we know that we'll see lower numbers at the third grade levels. And usually, and what we expect to see is that by eighth grade, the students have met or exceeded. And that's what we see with those ninety, ninety percent of their Hispanic students in math are in eighteen nineteen, before the pandemic, and seventy two of the Hispanic students in reading in eighth grade. Alfonso, one of the things that I was going back and forth on from your write up, and it makes sense, what you said to me makes sense. And it was that the students have been impacted, the gap has increased during the time of COVID. Predominantly has increased for our black students and our Hispanic students and our low income students. And there's this one sentence that says, white parents are using their resources to secure educational options for their individual children. And I, and I, and I, that I kind of, that's kind of just spun in my head. My experience is that predominantly parents that have the income, higher incomes, whether they're white, black, Hispanic, can afford to pay for the pieces that you mentioned there. In our documents, it's not necessarily in my experience that like high income Latinos, we can pay for the classes. we can pay for the classes just as well as the white parents that are, can afford it. And so that was the only piece. I see what you're saying, and it's true in your building with the experience of 95% of your kids are in poverty. That's a high number compared to our packet. It was a different number. But it was just that one sentence that kept spinning in my head a little bit. I understand from your explanation what you meant, and I saw that the gaps with numbers that you're showing. But that was just one comment. Gracias por su trabajo y es importante verlo a usted tantos años ahí con su comunidad y el corazón que le pone a su trabajo también. Gracias.
Gracias, Karen. May I just comment that one interesting thing about Aloha Huber Park is that I will say 90 to 95% of the kindergartners come to school or enter school without not number sense or phonemic awareness. So we start from scratch, and that's reality. But talking about numbers and results, you are totally right. It takes time. So our strategy hasn't been never, the achievement percent, we see that the achievement will come just with patience, consistency, systematic approach. And it takes us time, yes. I mean, our numbers start low, but we pay much more attention to the growth. That's how the kids started, where they ended the year, how they start, how they ended the year, and the gains that we're making. And, and that has been pretty much what motivates us to keep going. And I know that we'll face new challenges, and we might go backwards a little bit with the new tests. But I'm sure that we will find a way to recover because we are already trying to do it.
Gracias por su trabajo y el de sus maestros también, su comunidad.
Gracias.
Eric?
Hey, Alfonso. Thank you for the very, very good report. I'm just going to echo a little bit of what Dr. Perez said, but I noticed like you always have great equity results from Aloha Huber Park. I've been on the board seven years, and I think it's always been like, you know, Tom and Susan, Becky and me. Like, you know, this has been one of the best equity schools we've had, right? Because where you come from, it doesn't really, your output at the end of time of Aloha Huber Park, you see your numbers in 18, 19, amazing, awesome. So my question is kind of like, I know there's going to be damaging things that happened for the last two years. So I think you kind of mentioned it, but well, you had to dig out of a hole for a while because of, you know, like you said, lack of participation means and stuff like that. Will we expect like 21, 22 to not be so good, and you just come out of the, you know, maybe academic hole, or you, what do you, what do you expect here?
I, I would say that we're in the year that we are creating a new baseline. That's it true, because even we're kind of recovering, but kids in first grade and second grade, for some of them, is the first time in school. So we have to be patient, and we are right now creating basis. What are the basics again, which is okay. Something that we have learned is that it pays off if you don't rush. So honestly, I think that patience, even if it takes us, if we go just make 10% gains or 10% achievement this year, is not something that I will be satisfied, but I will understand. And it will be a challenge to, to keep growing. So I think that never helps to compare with others, but just to face the reality that you have and take the best of the kids, because I can tell you, I talk about that Kindle in the flame. It's beautiful to see the kids writing right now, and I can tell you that. The writing that I'm seeing and witnesses right now, I have never seen it in Aloha Huber Park. And that for me is huge, because I have seen great things in Aloha Huber Park. And the level of reading happening right now, the independent reading that I'm seeing right now is huge, as I've never seen it in the past, and I have been there 16 years already. So for me, that's the promised land that is just coming. We just give them time, it will come, and positive that will come.
I know it'll be hard, but keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sunita, then Becky?
Yeah, I have one more question. I know that you have your sauces people, and I agree with that. But you also have like 52% English learners. And I know that you have a good parent, parent support, like you build a community. How have you done that? So like, how do you get the support from the parents? What are the things? Did you do something differently to take the parents, you know, because they are also very important in a child's success? So I want to hear from you, what has the school done to make it so that the parents are also included in that sauce?
So the parents are so, so important. And many years ago, I have always conflicted because I said, I need more parents in my PTC. And I don't see representation in my PTC. Until, until I learned that the parents' participation happens of all different ways. Aloha Huber Park parents are there when you need them. And if you attend music programs, it's packed all the time. If you have teacher-parent conferences, it's rare the parent that misses that. And something that happens too is that we have a lot of families that really believe in the school and have had kids for generations, I mean, all the kids with us, or not necessarily for generations. So for them, that's why I will say that the gentrification concerns me, because a lot of families that love the school really are struggling to, to, to remain in the area. I created this space to create voice, so we just try to be creative. Before COVID, we, we have this every Wednesday, we have an open doors for Hispanic parents that go. I used to have before COVID, once a month, I open conversations with Alfonso at night with parents, and it was not necessarily about academic, but just topics that, here we are, let's talk about issues. And what I can learn from you, how I can learn from me, and it was just open conversations. I had to be honest, Sunita, this is an area that there's too much to do yet. I will not, I'm not satisfied yet. But, and this is an area that we need to work. The beauty, I, I created this position that Molly Dwyer, which is a former counselor, for me was really important to be a certified person because of the dedication. He's really doing a lot of affinity groups and bringing voices to, to the school. So we're just restarting this and relaunching new, new approaches to this.
Thank you.
Becky?
I was not going to ask a question because I thought maybe one of my board colleagues would get to this. But Aloha Huber Park K8 was one of the early adopters of our pre-K early learning. And then I heard you talking about how many of your students that arrive at kindergarten with never attending? And I'm just wondering, is this, you know, you could use more of the pre-K? Or just comparing and contrasting how the pre-K is working in that long term? Because we do see so many long-term that how your investment does make a difference.
Yeah. Again, with kids in poverty, time, and, and the school and collaboration with parents. So the pre-K, right now, it's beautiful that we have with the district and with the board support. But pre-K Aloha Huber Park, it had it for many years before that. And we really believe on that, and it really makes a huge difference on the kids. The kids that are in the pre-K are different kids, and you notice when they start kindergarten, they're ready. So focusing in the kids that needed the most, it makes, has made a huge impact. So, I mean, I, that's a program that I, I, I hope will never happen. But if not, I will go back to find funds, because that's so really, really important to give those that time. And especially with that model that the district has adopted, that is a playful inquiry environment, the discovery and developing those social skills and communication skills is beautiful to see, yes. So the pre-K, and, and let me tell you, the pre-K kids are coming, and the Kinder Kids are coming. So when I was talking about attendance, I will say that is, the kids are coming to school. It's just because of the COVID and the days out, and some kids just to get back into track. But once they start, I, I really think that they are happy to be back into school.
So how many other, if we, you know, funding were of no issue and finding the experienced and qualified teachers, how many other classes of pre-K do you think that you could have there at Aloha Huber Park?
I will, I will have the whole cohort, without doubt. I mean, I will have, I will, right now, let's call it two classes, I will have 10.
Good to know, good to know.
What I need, I need a side building there.
Yeah, okay. Good to know. More bonds down the road.
Now's the time to ask, Alfonso.
Well, I'm getting a new playground, which I'm really, hopefully for the bond passes, because that's actually, that's something that my kids need. So I'm really happy that, that it was, if it happens, we will get a new playground because it's really needed.
Karen?
Yeah, I was gonna say, for some of the attendance piece, for specifically in some of the the schools with a large Latino population, what I heard from some of the moms was around, they couldn't, during the COVID time, they couldn't miss any more work. So they ended up keeping their children at home, because if they were to miss more work, if somebody got sick, then they would lose their job. So it was this balancing act of trying to keep your job and trying to keep, you know, your kids in school while balancing COVID and COVID risk for the families. So that, I think, impacted a lot. And then preschool online is not the same as preschool in person. So even if, I think the kids that had the pre-K even online benefited from the children who didn't. So there's only a limited number of our kids that actually can get into that one class or a couple of classes that are available. But still, the, it's a struggle to not be, like, as we know, not being in person with the teachers and in learning that play and the play structure and, you know, all those other pieces. But I'm excited, we, we have those programs available and the work that's happening. But thank you.
Thank you.
Alfonso, I just want to mirror a lot of the praise that my fellow, fellow board members have for your work. It's incredible what you're doing over there. And thank you for taking a moment to point out what's happening with the gentrification and with the higher rents here. A lot of our conversations are focused on what happens inside the schools. But I think it's very important to, to point out those outside pressures, because those are huge issues for our community, and we need to find solutions. Because all across our district, folks are getting priced out. And before they're getting priced out, they are having a lot of trouble, because those rents put a lot of pressure on families. So I, I commend you for bringing that up to us and having the courage to talk about some things outside of the school day that hopefully we can advocate for, to get better results for our kids. My question for you is, I know in the past, Aloha Huber Park has had kind of like a different curriculum than the rest of the district. And now the school is moving towards that common curriculum. What do you see as some like the pluses and maybe some of the negatives of that and how that's working out for your school community?
Thank you, thank you, Tom. And, and when I was talking, I just, I started as a principal after being a assistant principal. So, and I have been part of this whole process. On one hand, we have this curriculum at Aloha Huber Park, because we're the needs to respond to the needs of the kids. But at the same time, we have to value all the effort that the district is making. And I really feel, when talking about, we have a focus and a vision for the future, that we have found this middle ground. So right now, what Aloha Huber Park is doing is finding this balance. So we keep that, when I was talking about the mission, that skill development piece, which is with some specific programs. But at the same time, we're putting a lot of effort in that choice, in that UNICEF study, in that workshop model. And you know what? They're working together finely. So it's not that they're programmed against the others. It's just about to find that, that middle ground. And, and I really think the same way that the district is doing some implementations, talking about the efforts in phonics and talking about the efforts in, in developing basic knowledge. I really think that we all are together in the same boat. So even talking about that program, I really feel that we are much more aligned, if not full-time aligned with the district now. But at the same time, we're keeping the practices of acceleration and the systems that have been proven to be successful in Aloha Huber Park. And I have taken that kind of as my challenge to, to say, yes, I really think that we can come to common ground, because at the very end, we are a district and we have to support each other.
Thank you, Alfonso. Excellent work. Next up, we will have our financial update with Associate Superintendent Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Collat. Members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to go over the financial report with you today. If I could draw your attention, I know it's only been a couple of weeks. We were hopeful at our last meeting that we'd be prepared to update some revenue forecast numbers. Unfortunately, we have not seen an update from ODE, so we, we don't have that for you tonight. So in terms of where the numbers are, they haven't changed from what you saw a couple of weeks ago. I do know that BA President Schmidt, as well as Superintendent Grotting, brought up the financials and kind of where we are. I'll address a few of those points here tonight. It is correct, the projected ending fund balance right now is about $97.2 million. That is prior to any cost of living allowance or allocation. So as we negotiate, look forward to finishing our negotiations around Cola, we're hoping that, that, that number will certainly go down. In addition to that, and we touched on it in Budget 101 last Monday night. It, looking just at the general fund, doesn't tell the picture of what's going on in terms of resources in our schools like it did, you know, maybe three years ago, right? So now you've got not only the general fund, which is our primary operating budget, but you've also got the student investment account, which for our district this year is about $30 million, as well as the one-time ESER federal funds that Superintendent Grotting mentioned at the, at the onset. So when you factor those in, and again, we touched on it a little bit last Monday night at Budget 101, and I'll, I'll do a better job of presenting that picture as we put our budget together for this year. But we're, I, I'm guessing right now, we're going to spend between the general fund and the SIA and ESER, we're going to spend about $56 million more than we spent last year, which is an 11, 12% increase. That's quite an increase from one year to the next. And so looking just at the general fund, it's hard to get the whole picture of what's going on in the district. So we'll continue to work on that to provide a better picture, both for you and the budget committee and, and the community at large about where we are on the finances of the district. But that's where we are today. That's all I have on the financial report. You do see later in your, further down in your packet, I've got an item down there about potential bond refunding. This is Carol Samuels from Piper Sandler brought this to us last week or week before last, that there may be an opportunity for us to refund some previously issued debt. I think it was under the, out of the 2014 bond that was issued. But we've got some debt out there that we may be able to refund and save our taxpayers some money. So what we do in this case is we, we'd refund that debt and pass that savings on to the taxpayers in terms of property tax rates. Given where interest rates are today, and given where the 10-year note was earlier today, I think it was over 2.1%. I would, I, I don't know if this is even going to be possible, quite frankly. But by passing this resolution tonight, we'll be in a position to where if it does make financial sense, we can do the refunding and again, save our taxpayers some money. So that's later on on your consent agenda. I appreciate your time and attention tonight and my wandering around here a little. But I'll take any questions you have at this point.
Becky?
Thank you for the report. And when we had the Budget 101 and looking at your report, it, it seems we had a lot of questions and surveying about class size. And I know that that is something that is, is discussed, and it obviously goes hand in hand with the staffing allocation model. And so how do we get our, because this is obviously a top priority for our families. How do we get our arms around that when our enrollment keeps fluctuating at different schools and calculating how we get to that, to that class size? And how we seen that from pre-COVID to now after with the funds that, that we have?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Tim. So you're, you're right, three years, we're down about, or at least we're projecting that next year, we'll be down about 2,000 students from where we were three years ago. That's a pretty significant number of students. But so what we do is we size our district and class sizes accordingly, right? So as the, as we've dropped students at the various grade levels, we've We've also absorbed a number of teachers in 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 that process. So it it hasn't been as much of a roller coaster, I wouldn't say the last couple of years as more of it's just been the downward slope of that roller coaster, right? Like it hasn't bounced around too much. The bouncing around that we've seen in our enrollment has been. Primarily the number of students that chose to go to Flex Online School. At the start of school last year compared to remaining in the brick and mortar schools. But we we use a formula, you're right, in the staffing allocation methodology, and we're going to bring that to you in your work session. I believe it's on April fourth. So we can give you a picture of how that staffing allocation methodology works. And give you a little peek behind the curtain. I shouldn't say that it's actually published in our budget document every year. For those that want to look at it, but give you a flavor for what's going on in that staffing allocation methodology and how that provides resources to our schools. Does that help?
Gona.
Thank you, Mike. I have a quick question about the. The bond refund. If the resolution passes tonight, does it is it going to have any impact at all? On the bond that we're going out for in May in terms of. What is going to save or rather how much money taxpayers are going to be saving? Is there any correlation between the two bonds? Is it going to make any impact at all should if we go on? With the bond that we're passing in May, that we plan to pass in May.
Excellent question, you're gonna it may, if we're able to do this, what it would mean is future. Bonds would cost less because we've refunded them at a lower rate. Which would then mean that we would save money that would be passed on directly to our taxpayers in terms of tax rates. We don't know that enough yet to say what that would be and how it might have an impact. But down the line, yes, the idea here is anything we do would be passed on directly to our taxpayers in the form of lower rates because of the refunding.
Karen.
Hey, thank you for your presentation. And I was, one of the questions I I. Kind of kept hearing at our in our bond presentations was. Can you pay for teachers with bond? And we I kept saying, no. Bonds are for buildings and technology. And there was. Some of the families were mentioning that people were saying that you could. And I was like, no, that you can't use the bond money for teachers. We use the levies for teachers and we pay for two hundred and seventy eight point six teachers with a levy. And then with the S R funds, it's twenty point six according to this report. So. As S R funding goes away, there's twenty point six, you know, staff members, if a levy were not to pass, then that's two hundred and seventy eight point six teachers, but. Bond is for buildings and for technology, and we can't change it once. Right now, it's going up to the ballot and. People are asking, can you change it and move things around? Said, nope. We have, we have put something, you know, out for the public to see, and that's what we we have to spend our money on. We can't just change our minds and and move things around. For the most part with, you know, the big buckets that we have in there. But I just wanted to clarify that for our community.
That's correct, Director Perez. Thank you for asking that question. The capital bonds are meant for capital items, right? We do have some technology and some other things like that in there, but primarily it's for capital needs. And that comes through a bond levy that is dedicated to capital. Good point on the local option levy that we are fortunate to have that in this community, very fortunate to have that. Support in this community and folks will get a chance to take a look at that. Next year because our levy will be expiring soon. And folks will get a chance to vote on that coming up here real soon. And it is so important when you talk about the number of teachers that are funded. Through that local option levy. And again, that unlike the other capital fund is dedicated purely to hiring teachers.
One of the things that I remember you mentioning at one of our meetings was around. The the importance of keeping that money, some money in our reserve for emergencies. And if we were to have. S I A money go down lower or something, we could actually afford to keep our teacher. So I know that it's that balance of, you know. Getting giving that to our our students and using that with our students and our staff. And then also keeping some of that reserve at a higher level. And I know you mentioned like what different districts are keeping at as a reserve. So that. We we can actually balance so that we're not, we don't want to, we want to make sure we have enough to be responsible. Fiscally, if we were to have some some changes in S I A or. Our funding from O D E.
Correct. As we look, another good point, Director Perez, as we look towards the future, we've kept a reserve. You know, we're we're not, as we look to our counterparts and our peers, both in terms of size of district, as well as geography, those that are around us. Our reserve amount is as a percentage of our budget is. Not the highest, and it's certainly not the lowest. We're kind of in the middle. If you remember, I shared that at Budget one oh one last Monday. So we're kind of in the middle of our comparative districts that we used. The points and the reasons why you have a reserve, especially in times like this where we're relying on one time S R funds at the federal level. It's important to have some reserves so that we don't set ourselves up for a funding cliff in a couple of years. So that's a good reason to keep a reserve, a good reason to keep our eye out and always a good reason to look two or three years out. As we build our budgets each year. Our our goal is to keep, you know, kind of small ripples in the river instead of a lot of whitewater rapids. In the rivers from year to year. So that that that's our goal, and that's an excellent reason to hold reserves. And I would say again, we're neither. Super high in reserves compared to our counterparts nor low, we're kind of in the middle.
Thank you.
Other questions for Associate Superintendent Schofield? I've got a quick question, you know, in thinking about enrollment in your projection of us being down two thousand students next year. My understanding of the rules around funding and enrollment is that they are modulated. So you get the higher. Of the last two years in terms of enrollment. And my question is, thinking about that rule, are we about to see a change in our funding next year or has that change already happened in this fiscal year?
So it it's a great question, Chair Colette. So we have seen a little bit of it in the current fiscal year we're in from the from the drop we saw. Last year. Our enrollment is actually lower this year than it was last year. So we're living on last year's because that was the higher amount. Pretty. We were pretty hopeful in terms of how we staffed and budgeted during the current year that our enrollment would bounce back. Remember. We lost about fifteen hundred students the first year. We thought that would bounce back up, you know, that we'd recover about seven hundred and fifty students. We have not recovered any of those students. In fact, our enrollment declined a little further. And we expect a decline even further next year in terms of where we are on our projection for two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three. So collectively. It's about two thousand students over a three year period. And we'll always be living on that prior year as long as our enrollment declines from one year to the next. It is a bit of a glide path, but it gets pretty rough when the numbers are so large.
Do you have a sense for in real dollars with that step down might be next year? Or do we need to kind of wait until we get closer?
Wait, yeah, we'll wait till we get closer, but I can give you just kind of a, you know, rough estimate that if if each student's worth nine thousand dollars. In our district in terms of A D M and we're down two thousand, that's about eighteen million dollars our district.
And thinking about the step down, we've already absorbed some of that step, right? So how much more do we have to go? That's kind of what's the delta?
Another few hundred students.
Okay. Okay, so a couple of million dollars potentially.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we will have the district COVID update. I see we have Administrator for Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Sika with us and Administrator for Student Services Hudson as well.
Thanks, Chair Colette. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, go through a quick presentation, and then we'll be able to answer answering questions that the board has. Right, so I'm just going to jump right in. Good to see everyone. Thanks for being here. As you know, as Superintendent Grunin said, lots of changes. Came our way and are going into into effect today and in the coming weeks. So. Just going to highlight a few of them and then answer any of those burning questions that they have. So thanks for thanks for listening tonight. So what we'll talk about, we'll look at the metrics. There was a little bit of a shift. Just want to make sure you remember that we are going to be looking at specific C D C. Numbers and guidance and what they're calling COVID community levels. So I just want to take a look at those. Talk about the shifts that that has. Those recommendations have caused us to go through in the organization. A lot of what we'll talk about at first are kind of things we've taken away, meaning restrictions that are are less severe or less restrictive. But I also want to make sure to highlight the the last part before we get to questions. Just want to make sure to highlight all the mitigation strategies that are still in place, that even though sometimes they may seem to. To kind of go under the radar a little bit that are in place to make sure we keep our staff and students safe. And then, like I said, we'll we'll take any of those questions at the end. Just remember this year, our North Star the entire time has been to keep a safe, engaging, consistent. In person, full time experience for all of our students and staff. I think it's a great time to commend everyone getting to this point with minimal disruptions to that. We're going to keep going. And like I said, we have some, we're able to take away some restrictions, get back to. Where students and staff can go a little more freely about their day and also talk about those strategies that are still in place. So the metrics I want to ask you to take a look at, remember last time we talked kind of going away from specifically looking at daily case rates for the county. And you know, localized rates, there's this C D C put in a new, a new threshold, they're calling them COVID community levels or yeah, COVID community levels. And there's sort of that sliding scale between cases, new cases in your community and hospitalizations. So if you have high cases and high hospitalizations, you'll be in a red zone or a high risk. As you can see, I have the national map up here. Most of the country you'll see is in green, which means it's some combination of low cases and low hospitalizations. So the risk of spread and the risk of overwhelming the healthcare system is as low as it can be according to according to C D C. Just a same idea, but showing you the state of Oregon. If you take a peek in the upper left hand corner of our state, you'll see us, you'll see Multnomah County and all of our surrounding communities and counties. Also in that low, low area, and with the exception of those two counties near the bottom, everyone is in either in the low or the medium risk level, which again. Gives recommendations of less restrictive mitigation strategies. And just finally, just to give you some context of what this means in B S D, how we've noticed it. I just pulled a little bit of point in time data about two months ago or January thirteenth. We reported over four thousand students either in quarantine or isolation. That means four thousand students that we. Were trying to do our best to serve while they were at home and and many of them were were ill and sick and and not able to participate in school. I pulled a number as of this morning and we reported six total students in in isolation. So that's just tremendous news. You know, the number will will bounce around a little bit, of course, but obviously we're nowhere near where we were just a couple of months ago. And I think that. Could probably only be only be described as excellent news. So here's a list of. Of how the changes at the state level. Remember, it shifted everything essentially to a local decision with some recommendations. Including the masking masking mandate becoming a local decision. So now we have masking being optional in all of our settings. Highlighting our tagline, shout out to our community, Community Involvement Department, that either way, it's okay. Campaign we're doing, we just want to make sure all staff and students know that the choice that they make for masking will be supported. Whether they choose to what continue to wear one or whether they choose to to not wear one. The instructional restrictions that we've talked about have been lifted, meaning if the the teacher making their best judgment for what the student should do instructionally or, you know, you know, in the learning for their classroom. They are now able to do that at their discretion without any type of COVID mitigation strategies getting in the way. What I want to talk just a little bit about the third bullet there discontinued contact tracing and then therefore most quarantines. The contact tracing, the C D C came out and was very clear with us that the process of contact tracing. Was not an effective mitigation strategy to slow the spread of COVID, particularly once we saw the Delta and Omicron variants. So it it's not just taking it away for the reasons of taking it away, it is based on. Tracking the virus and knowing what was effective and what's not effective. So contact tracing has actually been taken off the list of C D C recommended mitigation strategies. And if you remember the quarantine, that's kind of specific definition of quarantine was someone that was in close contact. With someone who had tested positive. So we would have found that out through contact tracing. So since we're not doing contact tracing, we're really not doing quarantining anymore. The reason you hear a little bit of that hesitation there. And a little bit of the maybe sometime is if we see our schools or a particular school spike in cases. You could see a case where an entire classroom does shift to remote learning because of an outbreak in a classroom. And so that could contain some quarantines as well. But for the most part, and hopefully for the rest of the school year, we won't have the need to quarantine these students. Lots of talk about distancing, social distancing over the past few years. The current guidance from the Oregon Department of Education, the Oregon Health Authority has a striving for three feet of space. In in all of our activities. But what that means is that the, like I said earlier, the the instructional strategy will sort of take precedence over the spacing. So if they need to get closer together to do their classroom activity, to to maybe even to eat lunch in a way that's a more manageable by the schools. And can free up staff to do other things, then that distancing does that does not take the the precedence like it did just a couple of weeks ago. Related to that, our spectators in our events will not be limited. And we do have built into the M O U some increased sick time available for staff members. Should they, a little bit complicated, but should they run out of sick time this year due to all the different various impacts of the M O U. So those are kind of the big changes that happened as the shift and as we as we, you know, implemented everything along with our. Our labor partners and came some agreements on what the conditions would look like. I just want to go over one more slide with you that talks about what's still there. I don't want us to forget all the work that'll still be going on. And it may be a little less visible sense, but certainly to keep our students and staff safe. I put that masking line up there again because that still is a mitigating strategy should. An individual feel that that helps them to stay stay more safe, that'll be supported and welcomed. We have a, we completed a significant upgrade and updates to our H vac system, including the regular change of filters and that'll continue. We'll continue to communicate positive cases throughout our school community. We'll continue to have isolation. For infected students and staff and just remember that difference between isolation and quarantine, the isolation is somebody did test positive. For COVID nineteen, so they'll need to stay, you know, stay home or stay away from the schools for a period of five days. Our testing program remains very robust. We still have diagnostic and screening testing for staff and students. We'll continue to monitor our site cases. So there may be times where we have to make decisions to. Increase mitigation strategies at a particular site. And then finally, we do have a clear threshold. To put bring back those more restrictive measures that I just kind of talked about taking them all away. If Washington County goes into a high risk category or a high COVID community level category by the C D C. That will, you know, by definition, initiate a return to our previous mitigation strategies that were in place this year. The C D C and Oregon Health Authority is confident that we are looking well into summer. And can expect the levels to stay at low into summer, but of course, we'll monitor that for any unexpected changes to that. Chair Colette, that's my update. I'd love to hear any questions from you. I'm going to end the screen share for now, but if you need me to pull anything back up, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Brian. Questions from the board? You know, I have a clarifying question for you, Brian. And sorry, Becky, I'll get you one second. When, you know, one of the hardest parts of this pandemic, right, has been all of the different metrics and the different cut rates and points at which things change and trying to get some sense of consistency and. Clear expectations for what what you know, what's going on. And this is a great moment right now. It's wonderful to see the cases go down with that slide where they went from four thousand to six quarantines and isolations. That's breathtaking and so positive. And love seeing that. Thinking ahead, were we to see like an increase in cases? And I sincerely hope we do not. I hope that that we're seeing this thing tail off, but we never know. What are the thresholds that would bring masking back to our district, just so that we're clear with our community and we have clear expectations for what to expect? I saw you had the red zone on there, but what does that mean in actual numbers of cases and or hospitalizations?
Yeah, um, so yeah, so let's answer that in two ways. Unfortunately, it's not quite as simple of an exact number because it's a sliding scale, but. If we go into the high category. if we go into the high category, that red number, the high category, that's the clear threshold. That is the what puts us over. What the numbers are, though, it's it's tricky to say, and I can send the board the the link to the website that lays it all out. But essentially what it is, is it's it's new cases per 100,000 residents and number of hospitalizations in your, in your, in your county. But there's a kind of predetermined tolerances where if you have more, excuse me, if you have less cases, you can handle more hospitalizations before going into that red category. And just to put it one more step further. If any of the possible combinations of those were to put you in the red category, say, one combination puts you red, but one combination puts you yellow. It's the, it's the worst one that gets actually limited. So it's a little bit of a safety net there. So if it's possible to go into red by a certain metric, you automatically go into that red. And I can send the board, there's a pretty good description on the CDC website that has some more quantitative measures. But like I said, it's that sliding scale of the less cases, the more hospitalizations, the more cases, the less hospitalizations to to trigger that change.
Would you describe that as like a weighting of the two measures? Or is it more complex than that?
It's they're they're weighted somewhat equally. I think it's just sort of saying the more, the more new cases is is prob, you would probably reasonably be able to say if there's a lot of new cases in your community, that the chance of your hospitals filling up rapidly is higher. So that's why you don't have as much tolerance for your existing hospitalizations.
That makes sense. And thank you for trying to explain something that sounds quite complex. Becky?
I apologize, Chair Colette. I should have gotten my hand up there before you made your remarks. I apologize. Dr. Seega, I don't know if this is a question for you or Dr. Hudson. But we've, we got a handful, the board did over the weekend. And then today, obviously, we had public comment about why we're having volunteers or why we have different staff members go through different protocols as far as, you know, mask wearing and what they have to prove. And I just wondered if you could share with us that this wasn't, you know, how this operational decision, this was not something that was arrived on by the board or how this operations decision protocol was was decided and what it was was based on.
Yeah, I can, I can take a shot. I'm just looking to see if anyone else. Okay, I'll take a shot at this one. So in the various laws and recommendations from OHA, it talks about the exceptions to the the required vaccine mandate, right? And one of our obligations is to ensure that we are keeping that staff member or that volunteer, that person associated with our school district, we're an obligation to keep them safe where they don't have the protection of the vaccination. And masking is one of the most effective personal individual protections that we can have. So we're in an obligation to provide such protection should someone have that religious or medical exception.
So is this something that we follow up with as far as like our risk management in that we're trying to keep as many people safe? If 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 that is a choice that they have made, that this is something from risk management that we need to do to keep our our staff and our volunteers safe?
Yeah, quite a few departments are kind of consulted and collaborate on decisions like these, including risk management.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that made me think about. If we have sports groups in our buildings or using our buildings, like, you know, like the one, one mom was saying, I can do my kids' sports. I can be a coach, but I cannot wear a mask and not be worried about it, but I can't be a volunteer. And I'm wondering, I mean, if it's a Toaltown Hills Park and Rec, you know, sports thing, and that that might be a weed, but maybe that are there for organizations that use our buildings, it might be different than for us when we are in charge of what's happening. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's the right way to be thinking about that one. The the policies, the procedures, the the things that that I've been talking about, that we're talking about, those are any Beaverton employee, anyone, you know, including coaches would be following those same ones. Of course, there's other entities that provide sports state that would be, you know, having different different policies or different procedures in for their employees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Well, we we appreciate it. This is probably the most optimistic COVID report I have seen in two years. And it is great to see those numbers coming down. And here's hoping that they stay there. So thank you, Brian, and thank you, Daniel.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Next up, we have a discussion item with District Council Camellia on policies JOA and JOB.
Thank you, Board Chair Colette and School Board. Tonight, we are bringing to a fairly minor change to both JOA and JOB. These changes really emanate from some work that the district has done to support our students who may have a reason to change their name or have a preferred name that is different than their legal name in our synergy system. And so for years, we have worked to come up with a way to reflect that and things like roll call and other reports and things that teachers access or substitutes access so that students really can protect that preferred name and have that be the primary way that we address them. Steve Langford and his team made those changes and noted that in our board policies, we simply referred to student name in the definition of directory information. And so in order to continue that protection of the this sort of differentiation between legal name and preferred name, we are asking and recommending to add the word preferred in front of name to those policies so that it's really clear which name could be considered directory information in our policies.
Board members, any questions for Camellia?
For the preferred name, do they? So then what you're, what I'm hearing you say now, this change will allow for substitutes when the substitute comes and pulls a record, it would have the student's preferred name instead of outing students in the process.
Correct, correct. That's a, that's a, that's another way of saying it is that is that the default that we'll pull to those reports will be the preferred name. The legal name will still be there in the back of the house and for all of our reporting to the state where where we really can't change that. But in terms of those places where a student might be outed or feel uncomfortable because the legal name is being used, now the preferred name will be the default for for those those reports and items.
And then for parent, like when the report card goes home, I don't know if we still do that paper report cards going home, but or when we see it on our, gosh, I want to say synergy, but it's not synergy. Is it synergy?
Parent view, you might be thinking.
When we see it on parent view as a parent, I will see my child's preferred name.
So, so yes, you would see the preferred name, I believe, in parent view and student view. And on the report cards, it will pull to preferred name. So the process still is for a student who is requesting a name change to fill out a form with their counselor and turn that in so that that gets recorded into synergy. One of the questions that has come up through the process is can a student keep that change of name private or or basically so that their parents wouldn't know that they had made a change to their name? And at this time, that's not a possibility because the way the system is going to now pull and default to preferred name so that we can protect in so many other ways, it is going to pull that name. So so we still allow students to share with their teacher or staff individually that they want to go by a different name and communicate that at the local level. But if there is a full system change to a preferred name, that's going to be a process that uses our name change form and parents for students who are under the age of 18 are involved in that process.
The other place, the only two other places that I, when we did this work that I had to consider were Zoom. So letting, making sure students are informed that if you put a preferred name, it will show up on your Zoom and your parent letters. And then also graduation for transcripts. We gave the option for students to have depending on, so that's something to think about for transcripts when they apply for scholarships and other things. Or for colleges, then they have to, sometimes we would either print both if they had it legally changed or print, you know, talk, give them the option of what name they wanted and talk through with the counselors what that would mean for them if they were to, for certain scholarships and things when they apply to colleges and career technology stuff. But thank you for doing that change. I think it's an important piece to, in many ways, for our students.
Thank you.
Becky and then Ugana?
And just so that we have, this has been something that's been discussed for a long time. And I recall discussing this with our student group. You know, it's, there's many reasons that people would have a preferred name and it it can be whether, you know, folks come here, somebody gave them that name and they want a preferred name. And I know being in a classroom that this is something, students take a lot of personal pride. If you pronounce their name wrong or or any of those things, it's just a point of, but there's, there's many different reasons why someone could put down and want to be known in our system with as a preferred name. And I'm just so glad that after lots that we are doing this the the proper way and the legal way and including all of our students.
Ugana?
Um, thank you, Camellia. I have a quick question for the benefit of our committee members. Is there going to be parental consent for this change to happen?
So when a student asks to change their name from legal name to a preferred name or make it a name change, they they do have to fill out a form and for students under the age of 18, yes, a parental signature is is required on that.
Thank you.
Karen?
Is there still a way for a student to have, like, I, I, my name's Karen. I might want to go by, everybody knows me by KK. Can I still have a spot somewhere where that name is saved? Or is, or is this more, this is like, or there's no longer a, the preferred name is now a real functional thing that changes everything?
I am going to ask if Steve Langford is listening, if he could pop on and maybe explain from the IT perspective, what's going on with the changes that happen in synergy? Because I am not the best person to answer that question. Steve, I see you've you've popped on screen. So thank you for saving me on the on the technical IT questions.
Absolutely. And you did a great job explaining it. Good evening, Chair Colette, members of the school board. Yes, there is still a nickname field that is also allows the student to say, I would, this is a nickname that I would use. So this would be an addition to that nickname.
Thank you for that clarification. Sorry, Camellia, for all the questions, but.
No, they're good questions. They're, they're, they're good questions. And one, you know, one thing to keep in mind in terms of this policy change, and the reason why we're asking for a change to policy is because the policy just referred to student name in general. And so we were concerned that if it just referred to name, that that could end up, as you said, Board Member Perez, that it could out a student if somebody requested directory information, for example, to create a student directory at an elementary school, for example, they make, they make directories. The PTOs often pull those names and make a directory. And so we were, we were wanting to make sure that the policy aligned to the terminology that we were using. So it was pulling the right data point into a directory like that. The process for student name change is one that is an internal process. And we've worked on that quite a bit through, over the years to both honor nickname as well as, you know, find a way to honor these these preferred names. And as as Board Member Tim Chuck highlighted, there's lots of different reasons why folks change their name or have a preferred name. And making sure that that's what shows up when a teacher calls roll or prints off folder labels and just a whole host of other things to really protect that preferred name for our students.
Yeah, thank you. As a new board member, I didn't know all those details. I really appreciate that information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Camellia? Thank you, Camellia. Great work. And we'll look forward to seeing this at the next board meeting where we'll have a chance to vote on it.
Great, thank you.
Next up, we have Executive Administrator for Planning, Mr. Sparks with us.
Well, thank you. For the record, my name is Stephen Sparks. I'm the Executive Administrator for Long Range Planning. Chair Colette, members of the school board, I'm happy to be here to talk about a strategy for portables in the district. I have a PowerPoint I want to go through here and I will go through it as quickly as I can and get to questions from you at the end here. So the question here is, what's the purpose of doing this? And long term, this has been a goal of the board and the school district to move from relying on portables in our schools and move students back into the buildings. This is done for, you know, enhancing the security of our students. And there are also better learning environments, having a permanent classroom. And it also improves that access to programming and support functions like the students being able to go to the restroom and not have to go outside and into a building. So that's an important part of why we want to get our students back into the buildings. And so what's our plan? We have a multi-phased approach here. And right now, this evening, we're coming to you with a request to declare portables that are at four schools and two administrative locations as surplus. We'll be coming to you in the coming months with additional sites. And the, 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 the benefit of declaring these portable surplus gives us the flexibility to move quickly or slowly, depending on the demand for the portables. The budgeting, the funding that we may have for disposing of portable. So for example, the single classroom portables are our older program or older portables. And they do not have the demand out in the community that the double portables have. So that single portable that's out in front of El Monica Elementary School, we're going to have to demolish that. So the other important factor is just because we're declaring them surplus doesn't mean that they're going to be removed immediately. It does take time for us to move the portables. So why these facilities that we're looking at? It's a reflection of prior boundary adjustments. I'm thinking of the El Monica Boundary Adjustment that we did pre-COVID that greatly reduced the enrollment at El Monica Elementary. We also have declining enrollment in parts of the district as we, as you've been talking about this evening. We have changes in programming which creates more space in our buildings. We also have bond-funded enhancements that are making spaces more, you know, putting in permanent walls in the buildings that will then facilitate having those classrooms activated with classes that may be in portables here today. And with the administrative sites, the move to the Summit Building will equate to us not needing some of the portables. Our current inventory, you can see here is we have 122 portables which equate to almost 190 classrooms. You can see the distribution here of the portables and they're primarily at our elementary schools. With this strategy, we're not proposing to eliminate every single portable in the district. We are taking a small bite, which will improve you know, the number of students that are actually in permanent classroom settings and. Uh, and you know, the number of uh, students that are actually in permanent uh, classroom settings and not the portable classrooms. It will take many years for us to get to a place where we will not have to rely on portables at all of our schools. This uh, graph right here, um, as you know, we in the long range uh, planning section. Have lots and lots of data that we um, track. And what I want you to um, take away from this is those um. Colored columns, they're blue means they're really empty, red means they're really full. The first column is looking at a school based on its permanent capacity. So the inside the building. The second column includes the portable capacity. So what I've done here in this next slide is here are the elementary schools that have portables. This prior, oops. This prior slide was just all elementary schools. This is just the um, schools that have portables. And you'll see that um, we have about ten elementary schools that have um, plenty of capacity. And we don't necessarily need to rely on those portables. The four um, or the three elementary schools that were here with you tonight. They have um, lots of capacity and don't need those uh, portables. And I'll get to the specifics um, for each of these schools in just a moment. So going through um, the schools here, this is El Monica. And there are five portables out here. The two that are circled were added um, before COVID when the enrollment uh, at um. For Grove was quite high and was rivaling um, middle and even perhaps some high schools. So with the boundary adjustment that we've done. These two portables that are in the blue circles, we don't need anymore. Those um, portables are empty. And only the three portables over here on the right side of the screen are being used and they're being used for a fifth grade. Um, their fifth grade class. As part of the two thousand fourteen bond. Inside El of El Monica here, we are adding permanent walls to a number of classrooms. And that may facilitate the ability of of the school to move the fifth grade back into the building. This is a decision that will come much later in in consultation with. Our teaching and learning partners and most importantly, the school principal. And so by declaring the surplus right now. That will give us the flexibility at a future date to dispose of those um, three portables should we need um, or be able to dispose of them. My plan would be to dispose of the two that are in the uh, blue circles. Uh, much sooner and have to, you know, wait and see on the other three. With Fur Grove, they have about five um, empty classrooms today. They don't use this portable but for uh, music. And the principal there is very anxious to see this portable go away. And so this is a portable that we would like to uh, remove. Sooner rather than later. This is kind of the canary in the coal mine uh, portable to see what the market demand uh, would be. For a double portable out there in the community. At Highland Park, we have four, oops, we have four single um, portables here. All of them are being used for storage at this point. You can see how close they are to the property line. There is a public path that goes behind this area. It is just um, it's something that we need to correct. Uh, these portables have um, no purpose other than to provide storage at this point. And here at Raleigh Hills. If the bond is passed, this um, site will be redeveloped and those portables will be um, taken away. When the um, six, seven, eight program finishes after next school year, those portables will not be uh, needed. So declaring them surplus right now again will give us that flexibility over time to move them off the site or demolish them. Um, as the case uh, may, may be needed. As part of the summit move, um, the sped program uh, offices that are over there at the ISB campus. This portable right here is a single, they use it for meeting space. They will not need it uh, for meeting space anymore since we will have meeting space at the Merlot um, building and um. You know, small group meetings at the summit building. And then here at our central office. We have plans for utilizing the buildings, the portable buildings over on the east side, which is the larger rectangle. The three portables uh, circa nineteen ninety age over here on the east side, we'd like to demolish. We have the clothes closet in two of those portables. We are going to move them over to the east side of the uh, property. We're looking at the uh, large portable where the bond team is located and the um. Portable on the, you know, just north of that large. It'd be a much larger um, space, a much more um. Convenient, almost retail type setting. And uh, we're kind of excited about how we uh, were able to improve that function over there in those buildings. So the two um, portals that are circled in blue, those are um, surplus as well as the three singles. Uh, that we would um, ask you to declare a surplus as part of this action. Here, I'm just going to click through a couple of of photographs. This um, is not to shame anybody, so I'm not going to say what. Uh, school we took these at, but we visited a number of uh, schools and you can see that our portables here are largely areas of um, storage. I think the thing that we would like to be sure that you understand is that with um, the COVID requirements, you can see lots of tables, lots of chairs, lots of desks. That in adjusting for um, COVID learning, our schools are very successful in um. Becoming a little more lean operation within their buildings. And so a lot of this material, we just don't need. We will be able to hold on to some of it to be able to respond to growth in other areas if there is need for it. But the, the scale of uh, material that we have is um, not necessary. So that's it for my um, presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and. I will turn off the uh, the share here and I can pull it up if you would like.
Susan, uh, then Sunita and Karen.
I guess I'm just going to go to the bottom line is Steve, because I I um. We're putting up some, we would like to put up some of our portables for sale. And.
That is correct.
Okay, because uh. Um, and so you have a certain amount you want to put up for sale this year and then twenty twenty-three and then going forward, that's what you want to see happen. Is there like, do we have to vote on this or is this informational? I'm I'm just not quite sure.
So you, you will have to do to declare it's, there's a a um. Item in the consent agenda to declare a number of portables um, identified in the agenda bill as surplus.
Okay, thanks.
And Susan, we know we gave a lot of detail this evening. Part of that was we have three new board members not understanding this. You've been through the surplus process before. They have not, per se.
Sunita, then Karen.
Yeah, I want to thank you for giving this information. Yes, it did help. Uh, I would love it, you know, if you can, if if a school needs space that we can give them classrooms rather than portables, but. Economics doesn't allow us to do that right now because it is very expensive to give a classroom, as you know, right? So um. Putting a portable, declaring a portable as surplus. I think I'm okay with because you're not saying you're going to discard it, right, dispose it. But I think the agenda item said disposal, so that kind of confused me. And the other thing is that um. I know that you mentioned you answered my, some of my questions in the email, so thank you for that. Um. I know that once we put it in surplus, you said that. The class, the school portables are in good conditions and in the past they have been given to schools which they need, who need a portable. So I guess that is a process where you would be asking other schools if they need portables before we make a decision of discarding them.
So the, the process works where we will work with the individual school, you know, district school in getting the um, portable ready. So moving out their material and accommodating whatever needs they have. We will then list the uh, portable for sale. On a government uh, materials webpage where we have listed. Portables before and we have been able to um, sell them um, before, most recently to um, Hope Chinese Charter School. Um, that bought one of the portables from the Five Oaks Middle School campus. We've also, um, again with the single portables, we have listed them, we've listed them for free and still weren't getting any um, bites. On them. So it, it just depends on what the demand is out there.
So how does that work? For instance, say a school.
So Nita, let me address the the remainder of your question, and that is schools can request um, additional space in their facilities. It is not simply by putting up a hand and saying, I'd like a portable or two. We go into that facility and evaluate because not all principals use their buildings. All spaces. In the most efficient manner. So we will at times um, provide guidance. We'll work with teaching and learning on that. Um, so it's not just a matter of, oh, I think I want a portable because the mission which we've taken on since um. This bond of two thousand fourteen. The board has been giving us very clear directives. Eliminate our portables as much as possible across the district. It is for safety and security. It is for site. Of student visibility from the main building, all kinds of things. So simply because a school says, oh, we'd like a portable, doesn't mean they need one. I go in to help principals evaluate their space and say, we could probably make this work in a better fashion and those types of things. Again, really reiterating the board's directive of keeping kids in the interior of our building as much as possible.
So uh, also um. The cost of moving a portable versus buying a new portable or or adding a new classroom in a school. Can we get some guidance on that?
Mm-hmm. As you know, you've got the cost of that the board passed for VOS, uh, that's a little over two million dollars in that facility for those four classrooms. Now that's in that one. Each and every single building may be different depending on the design that's there. Um, to acquire a portable, I'm not sure the cost off the top of my head, but to move a portable from an existing site to another is anywhere between two and four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, it would be nice to have the portable cost too, just so that we have. Because I know Sato was three million for co- for classroom, so that comes to like seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is way more than two hundred or four hundred thousand for moving a portable if a class, who needs it, right? And evaluation process is good. That's good that we need that. But um, I think we need to look at all those costs before we say, okay. Putting them in surplus, I think it's okay because Steve explained that it's putting in a surplus doesn't mean that they're going to. Discard it. Putting in a surplus is meaning that they're going to look at it, right, and evaluate.
Please note, Sunita, that our team evaluates this on an ongoing basis and we don't make haphazard decisions on what. What is surplus? I think Becky can attest as well as Eric and Susan, it's probably been several years since we came up with surplus of portables. Um, I don't think we moved them along as fast as they would like us to, um, but we did make some promises about the close of this. This bond that we would be able to start making movement in a little bit more significant fashion.
Thank you. Thanks for answering my questions. Thank you.
Karen.
Hey, hi, good evening. Um, I appreciate you um, giving us this background information for the new board members and I appreciate. Um, how you mentioned um, the process of how it happens. I I didn't know that prior. Um, I also appreciate that you're speaking to the admin, the community to make sure that, that, that space is not being used. Um, and I was thinking about like Highland Park having four portable, portables worth of stuff. And in my mind, I thought, where are they going to put that stuff? But it looks like in some of the pictures, it might just be furniture that um, has been. Maybe as we go down in numbers that maybe isn't, is no longer needed and. As a teacher, I saw those hexagon tables and I was, dang, we got to put those out to the, you know, elementary school teachers and say, do you want a hexagon table? Because I would take those in a second compared to those big, you know, so um, I know, I'm wondering like, how will, can staff take a look? I know you've done that in the past where staff takes a look at what is this surplus um. Materials that maybe we can trade out some of the, the, the furniture that might be more functional in some classrooms as the numbers change. Um, is that still the case?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, it's a great, great inquiry. Um, the other part of this is, as Steve mentioned, I think we'll see a shift of what we're sit, what's sitting in those portables now with COVID protocols diminishing. We will have reentry of furniture back into classrooms because a lot of that furniture is actually from our teachers' classrooms. As you go into those portals, you'll see teacher names all over the place.
I remember.
Yes, so it's not necessarily that they've given up on it. It's just we had to free our classrooms up of quite a bit of furniture just for, for movement and space for students too, though.
And then the last question would be like, where did you get the disco ball in the background for tonight's meeting? It looks like my daughter's like little like um. Little disco ball that they do with the karaoke.
Okay, all disclosure, all disclosure. I'm sitting in a bedroom because we're in a remodel. My wife is watching a TV with no sound on it and it's.
So it's not the disco ball.
It is not, my apologies, my apologies. And she just shut it off. She's mortified.
Didn't, didn't, didn't mean to mess it up for her.
Um, hey, I just want to pause for, for a second and make sure that we're clear on what we're voting on later, right? So. In, in Carl, please, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you've already done an internal prioritization and you've taken a look internally before you put this on a list to be dispossessed. And once we vote for it to be dispossessed, it is highly likely that those portables will either be sold. Or uh, demoed basically is what I'm hearing in some cases. So this isn't, you know, this isn't a surplus list where they're going to be reconsidered again. This is like the last stop on the train.
That is correct, and as noted earlier, it doesn't mean tomorrow we go in and change the locks and, you know, move everything out. This is, this will be a purposeful community, you know, conversation and process to get to move them off our properties.
I just want to make that clear so folks aren't confused later about what they voted for.
Right, because you, you will see us again in the future, but they will be for different um, portables at different locations.
Right. And Jericho, I please understand that uh, principals were involved in uh, these decisions on each site. This was not done on a facility side. We did a walkthrough of those. We went through walkthroughs of several other schools and you're not seeing those here tonight, um, because there is still a significant use for those on other sites.
Yeah, I understand. It, to me, it's about the process, right? For a lot of large municipalities or school districts, you go through and you have an internal prioritization process before something's brought to the governing body. But at that point, once something's put on the dispossession list, the intent is to sell that item. The intent is not to hold the item as surplus for a long period of time.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, Becky, then Karen, then Sunita.
Hooray.
Becky? Do you have a question?
My question was, hooray.
Hooray, oh, oh.
Hooray, yay, way to go, long time coming.
Oh. Okay. Gotcha, uh, Karen.
As I thought you were having technical difficulties or karaoke in the back there. Um, this, so just to clarify, the principals were already um, involved in this process. They're not, it's not something that you're going to go back and talk to them now after we've actually surplus their stuff.
No, we, we would never come to the board. We would never come to the board prior to talking to a principal.
Okay.
That's enough, yeah. Yeah, surprise.
Sunita.
So the principal of the schools that are giving up that property were. So the principal of the schools that are giving up that property were talked with, right? But the next thing would be that you would put this on sale and one of our schools could bid for it, right? No. So like, for instance, say a school is saying that we don't have enough space and I would take a portable. Were those schools not even asked?
Those schools need to go through us. So those schools, if they have a sense that they are, they do not have enough capacity for the number of students in their school, they need to contact facilities. We'll do a thorough walkthrough of their facility and look at the classrooms, look at how the utilization is happening of the facility. And we're not hearing from a single school. I have not heard from a single school in probably four years of any need for additional space. I know you've heard from Mountain View. Again, as a deputy superintendent of operations, I have heard not word one, not an email, not a call to come over and take a look at the facility or any, anything else. But I will be doing so after finding that information out the last couple of days.
Okay. I, I, I would think that for, for me to vote yes for this, this, I would like you to ask or I would have somebody from Mountain View tell you to come and look at it because if there are portables, I would like them to at least bid for it or tell you guys that we need it because I, I heard that in our meeting that they want more lands, more space. So that's, that's the way I feel.
Ugana.
Um, Stephen, I apologize, I missed part of your presentation. It's bedtime and bedtime is usually rough in my household, so pardon me. My question is a very quick one. Does it cost more to add additional classrooms or to get portables? How did we end up with portables instead of additional classrooms?
So during our time, sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, it's past my bedtime too. The portables are a rapid response to very quickly changing environments. And that's the reason why we have portables where we do. Adding a permanent space to a building is more involved in looking at how you can accommodate those spaces. And then you have to go through the capital bond process to, you know, build permanent spaces. So his, I, I, I don't have all the historic knowledge that others might about why portables at those locations, but typically that's the reason why.
Exactly, Steve, during the time, I would say during the nineties and early two thousands, we had significant growth throughout the district and we did not have the resources in a bond to build permanent capacity. So an easy thing to do was to add portables onto sites. And with our standards of safety and security, we are in the process of trying to eliminate portables and build permanent capacities of all facilities to make sure that students can enjoy their entire school day on the interior of a facility and gain access to all the necessary programming that's needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Carl and Steve, is this a time sensitive ask? Or is this something where if we brought it back at the next board meeting is an action item, you'd be able to report back on any further internal conversations?
That's perfectly fine, perfectly fine.
Okay, then I think what I'm going to do is take it from the consent agenda tonight. So this will be removed from the consent agenda. We'll be able to vote on everything else and then we'll look for this as an action item in our next board meeting after you've had some more internal conversation.
Absolutely, I will make a call to Mountain View tomorrow based on this feedback that we've received from our, from Sunita this evening. And I'll be able to share information.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, thank you. I, that was just going to be a process question, then you just asked it, so thank you.
Great. Okay, then I think this is our last discussion item and we're going to move into the action items here. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we, did I miss something somewhere? No, I, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Right, it has been properly moved and seconded that we vote on the consent agenda. I will take a roll call of board members and you can vote either aye or nay. Susan.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Sunita.
Aye.
Ugana.
Aye.
Becky.
Aye.
Tom, Tom votes aye. I'll never get over how weird that is to ask yourself to vote. And the motion passes unanimously. With that, we are at the time for board communications. Board members, do you have some communications for us tonight? Okay, I see Karen and, and then Becky. And then Susan.
I couldn't find my little cursor. I just wanted to thank OSEA for, I'm on the bargaining team, so it was great to meet their team and to start our conversation and for the Beaverton, like, um, the, the other side, I, I, we're both districts, so I just kind of OSEA and, and us over here, having that conversation. It was a good process and I'm new at it, so it was great to, to meet everybody and see how thoughtful they are in their, in their, in the conversations. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
And then I think, I think it went Becky, then Sunita, then Susan is what I see on my screen.
Um, I just want to thank staff and board members for giving of their evenings to go out and talk to our community, whether it be our NACs or our PTOs or the CPOs or CPO three R Sharky, whatever, whatever you're out there speaking to. I want to thank you for taking time from your families to educate our community on our upcoming bond. This is important information to share with our community and I appreciate your investment into our community to educate them and all that you are doing on behalf of getting the word out about our bond. Thank you very much.
Sunita, and then Susan.
I want to thank Brian Seega for giving us such wonderful numbers for the COVID update and all that they do in providing this information and guiding us through this time to make sure that our students, staff, everybody is safe in the school. So thank you.
Susan.
Well, I, I know that everybody's been through a lot this last school year, last two years actually. And I know we're coming towards the spring break and I wanted to wish our staff, our students, our school board a very restful spring break.
Other comments from the board? I would just echo Susan, I mean, it is incredible to be here and see the numbers that we're seeing right now. But I think of everything that our school district has been through over the last couple of months, what our staff have been through, what our families have been through, what our students have been through. We've seen the, the four thousand numbers that preceded the six numbers we are today. And I hope everybody has a chance to catch their breath, get some rest and really enjoy their spring break right now because so many folks deserve it. We wouldn't be here right now with these numbers if it hadn't been the work of a lot of staff, a lot of students and a lot of parents and folks in our community. So thank you all for that. And then of course, I would be remiss if I didn't put in a big pitch for the bond here. It is incredibly important and we're, we're getting closer and closer to election day. And that bond represents a huge step forward in seismic safety for our district. It also represents an opportunity to ensure that our funds are going where they should be going, which is towards teaching positions and staff positions across the district. So making sure that we have a handle on our deferred maintenance is incredibly important and that bond will make sure that happens too. So if anybody's out there watching and you, you agree with this, please let people know. Seventy-five percent of the folks in Beaverton do not have kids in our school. And we need to be having conversations with them and letting them know about the importance of this bond. On election day, we'll be glad that we did that. And I'm hoping for a very successful bond that can support our students. So with that, I'm going to adjourn our board meeting and board members stay on because we have an executive session following this.